We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Thursday, September 20, 2018. Would everyone please rise for an invocation by Debbie Behar, who is going to sign the invocation?
Lord, bless all the people who have gathered here today. And also, we give thanks that we have this time to learn something about the death and the cards that are going to be presented. We thank you, Lord, for our time here. Bless everyone again, and we say thanks in the name of the Lord. Amen.
... to the fact of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen Grant?
Here.
Vice Mayor Christina Romulus?
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz?
Here.
Commissioner Mac McCray?
Here.
And Commissioner Joe Casello?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
All right. I have one addition to the agenda under Legal 12H. We are adding a, I believe it's a code, review the lean reduction order by the special magistrate as 12H.
And Mayor, could we at least, I would recommend moving 11C up to the end of announcements, and if you would like to move up 11A and B too?
Is there anything else?
Public hearing item G, Proposed Ordinance 18023 needs to be tabled.
Again, sir?
G.
Eight G.
And...
Oh, wait a minute, stop. Okay, two people telling me. What was it again?
Eight G.
Eight. Thank you.
Proposed ordinance 18023. And 12 Legal B, Proposed Ordinance 18017. Remain on the table.
I have a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, agenda is approved unanimously. Moving on to conducting the second public budget hearing for fiscal year 2018-19's annual budget. Jim, the resolutions?
Yep. Okay, starting with ordinance, excuse me, Resolution R. 18128, a resolution of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, adopting a final mileage rate for the city's general operating fund for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019, providing the final mileage rate of 7.900 mils is 5.53 percent above the rollback rate of 7.4863 mils, providing for separability, conflict, and providing an effective date. After that resolution passes, it will be Resolution R. 18129, a resolution of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, adopting a final budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019, providing for separability, conflict, and an effective date.
I have a motion to approve Resolution 18-128.
So moved.
Second. And the reason I'm going to second is we have public comments, Mayor.
This is for the mileage rate?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Herb Saw, 1711 Wood Fern, Boynton Beach. You know, with everything going on in this city, with building the downtown and everything, you're running a tight ship. You go from 7.9, you should, I said, go to eight, one tenth, will bring in over a half a million dollars. We need it. If I had my way, it would be 8.1. But eight, it should be eight, round number eight, half million. You're running too close. You're running too close. I hope that somebody up there has got enough gumption to talk and open it up again, because once you raise it again, or you keep it there, you can't, you can't raise it. I mean, listen, you're going to run into problems, especially with building, everything, people are going to need raises, you're running through tighter budget. Go to eight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. You know, regarding the, all the developments in our town square, that's why we're using the public-private partnership, so we don't have to raise the mileage rate to pay for it. So is there a further discussion?
Yes, I have a question for the City Manager. With the comment that just came from a resident, I want to ask you personally and one-on-one just now, do you foresee us running into a problem with 7.9?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion?
Just to the City Manager, we discussed it a little earlier about the CIP budget, how some rules and money might be reallocated.
I think, would that come under your next item?
That would be the next item, we'll just discuss in the mileage. All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, saying none, resolution passes unanimously. Moving on to 18-129, adopt the final budget for the general fund and in all other funds for fiscal year 2018-19, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second for discussion.
Yes, Lori, would you like to...
Two follow-up items. Now, we also have a brief PowerPoint, but I know you've seen it several times, so you'd let me know if you'd like us to go through that one more time for you, or if we don't need to, we can move on.
Let us know what's different.
Nothing, nothing different.
Okay.
Just abbreviated.
Okay.
Two follow-up items for you. One, I wanted to let you know, we're, as you know, we're still in the bargaining process for our fire, our CBAs, our collective bargaining agreements with the IAFF, the Firefighters Union, as well as our blue and white collar, SEIU. So this budget, at this point, we have funding in a line item in the budget that just kind of captures the possibility, depending on the outcome of those negotiations, the possibility of wage increases. The budget does contemplate, and I'd like the Commission's approval or discussion tonight for the general fund employees that are not represented employees, that we have provided funding for a 3 percent wage increase in this budget. So that's something we haven't discussed, the wages before, so I wanted to outline that. That, the value of a 3 percent raise for the general employees in the general fund is about 382,000 and change. I budgeted 850,000 for wages for all employees. Again, we're still bargaining on the others. So that, that money will come out of that 850, and then that'll leave us funding left to continue and finalize bargaining with SEIU, and again, with, with the fire department.
Is the police in a separate...
Police has a step plan there in the second year of their CBA, so they are not subject to raises. It was built in a plan...
So they're not coming out of that 850?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
There will be no adjustment to their wages. And one follow-up, you know, we had the discussion at the last hearing on the exhaust system...
Before you go on to that, we're gonna, I'd like to have a discussion on this, and then we'll move on to the next item. Is everyone on the board okay with 3 percent raise? Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. I'm on board with the 3 percent raise, but I'm just saying, we don't need to like beat it up tonight, I'm just saying, we have to move funds to get the 3 percent, you know, we move funds around.
They're in there.
They're in there.
Yep.
That's all I need to know.
Yes, sir.
I'm on board.
Okay, so seeing no more comments, we'll...
Comments, not with that.
But we'll move on to the second item.
Okay. So we had a discussion at the last meeting about the potential of taking a look at some of our capital funding for accelerating our replacement, our installation program for new exhaust capture systems for the fire department when, for the public, it's when the apparatus are in the fire bays, the capture of the carbon monoxide, and this is the very non-technical version from the City Manager, that captures the toxic, you know, fumes that come out of vehicles, there's systems that connect the vehicles directly to remove those, that polluted air out of the bays, and it's a, it's a safety issue. We have current systems in all of our fire stations now, but they're, they're antiquated systems, and there is a new technology available. So we had talked about a three-year replacement or implementation program at the last hearing. We've taken a look at, and we did have a little bit of discussion about some of the CIP funding that was in there for the golf course, and we are funding the replacement of a cart barn, which is much, much needed, as well as cart paths. A third project that was in there was that entry road that we talked a little bit about, and I sat down with Andrew, and we believe that that can be delayed a couple of years. It's not imminent, it's not that bad a shape that it can't be reconsidered, you know, put off for a year or so. So I wanted to, if the Commission wants to, we can take a portion of that funding and accelerate this implementation of these exhaust systems, and perhaps do the primary bays of the remaining three stations that would need these, and that would be about $100,000, give or take a little bit, and get that done next year pending the vendor's availability, which we're working on. And then year two would then allow us to get the remaining bays, which we call reserve bays, where we don't actually have apparatus parked in the stations in those bays, but get them retrofitted, because we do plan on, for growth. So we can do that over two years, 100,000 roughly each year, and just delay that road project for a couple of years, and, and get that accomplished, because I know that was important to several of you, for all of you.
Yes, thank you.
Doesn't make a change in the budget as it is, as it sits, it's just we reallocate the assignment of funding within the capital program. Doesn't affect your funding level.
So Jim, would we approve this as stated or amended?
More consensus.
As stated.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any comments from the board?
I'd just like to thank the, the Commission and the City Manager for going along with this proposal. I think it's essential to our firefighters' safety and health, and I appreciate, as a former firefighter, you taking this and moving it forward. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner McCray?
First of all, I'd like to say to our finance department group up here this afternoon, I'd like to say personally, from all of us, thank you for all of your hard work. Tony, thank you. I know we're not easy to work with. I'd like to say to all department heads here tonight, thank you for doing the best that you can. I'm just saying, I know we're a tough bunch to work with, but we have to tighten our belts, and I really, really appreciate all that you all have done. Lori, City Manager, thank you for giving us a budget that we can work with. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I want to remind Commissioner to speak for himself, we're not all hard to work with.
Well, Vice, Vice Mayor, that's you, okay?
Seeing no more comments, may have, we already have a motion approved and seconded. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Resolutions Number 18-130.
A resolution of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, ratifying the 2018-2019 annual budget for the Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Agency and providing an effective date.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Comment, wait, stop.
Okay.
Since we have the CRA, I'm just saying, I'd like to also tell them, thank you as well, I'm just saying, for giving us a budget that we can work with. Michael, thank you, thanks staff, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, and staff does as well. As I was saying, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right. Moving on to informational items by members of the City Commissioner, Commission. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Yeah, I met with representatives from Olin Group today, and that's it.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the funeral service for Mrs. Sherry's daughter, and it was very well done, and I'd like to say to staff, you know, thank you for the two lights that you have behind me. It reminds me of the funeral home, and you know, that's the business I'm in, you know, so I do feel at home tonight by not being able to go to work. Second of all, I'd like to say to Monday, at the demolition, I don't know what I almost pulled, but anybody that do construction work with them sledgehammers, my hat's off to you all. That's hard work, thank you. That's why I went on to college and got two degrees. I thank God for my father saying, I'll never make it, I would not have made it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Just a few things to disclose. This past week, I attended the memorial service of one of my fellow Tourist Development Council Board members, Mr. David Allen Burke, a very hardworking individual in our community who's sat on the TDC Board for over 20 years and served Palm Beach County in many capacities. He was the Vice President of Marketing for the Breakers Hotel, which is one of our, our flagship hotels here in Palm Beach County, and he was a great friend and a great mentor to me for the brief time that I knew him, and he will be sorely missed. So I just wanted to just let you all know about him and his legacy and what he provided to us. You may not know him, but his life and his impact definitely stays behind. I also, I'm not sure if I disclosed, but I did meet with, I met with, gosh, I'm drawing a blank.
I'd just get back to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll come back. Thank you.
Commissioner Casello?
No disclosures, Mayor.
All right. On September 8, I went to the Fifth Annual POW MIA OREE event held at the Veterans Cemetery over on 441 on 9/11. I attended our Boynton Beach 9/11 ceremony at our Veterans Park. I think it was a great event to see our police and fire, and I'd like to thank again Captain Deal for his story, was moving, and I'm glad that we are, have a piece of 9/11 here, and that we can always remember what happened and the people that were lost. I also attended the grand opening of One Boynton, met with their owner, and it was, I told them how grateful we are for the new paint job. On September 12, I attended a meeting at Healthier Boynton Beach. I'm on the advocacy committee, and so we are advocating for caregivers in Boynton Beach is our main focus, and trying to enact the Care Act, which AARP is trying to get, move forward, so I'll speak to soon-to-be State Representative Casello about that. On September 14, I attended the Florida Legal Cities Legislative Policy for Land Use and Economic Development. September 17, I also attended the demolition event, definitely had a lot of fun using that backhoe, and the, what is it, the elected officials won the contest, yeah, against staff for tearing down the front columns. I also had a meeting with the Boynton Beach Mental Health Committee. Today, I attended the Transportation Planning Agency's meeting, and we were voting on the five-year, or the, I guess, the 20-year future plan, and we are looking to expand the turnpike from four lanes to eight lanes, and adding two managed lanes in the future. I also attended the programming event for Race to Equity, which is under My Brother's Keeper, which is set for February 20th and 21st of 2019. If anybody would like more details about that event, please let me know. Vice Mayor, you remembered?
Yes, my memory came back. I met with Bradley Miller regarding a project that's coming before us.
Mayor, before we move on?
Yes.
I'd like to say to our men and women in blue, thank you for stepping up to the plate with the lockdown of the Boynton Beach High School. People don't realize just what an almost disastrous event that could have been, but I'm just saying, following protocol and keeping us abreast on what's going on. Lori, thank you as well, because I was absolutely nervous, because people was calling me, talking about what is going on with Boynton High School, and the things that we could and could not say. Thank you for letting us know, and everything worked out. Just want to tell men and women in blue, hats off to you. Chief Gregory, thank you all.
Mayor?
Yes.
And just to piggyback on that, because you just jogged my memory, I spoke to the Deputy Superintendent yesterday, and he too, out of, you know, his own volition, praised the police department for all their efforts, so everybody at the school district took notice and appreciated what you did.
Seeing no more informational items, moving on to announcements. First is proclaim the week of September 24 to 30, 2018, as Deaf Awareness Week. Beth Wagmeister, Director of Deaf Services for Gulfstream Goodwill Industries, will accept the proclamation. Proclamation, whereas 93 percent of deaf children are born into hearing families, only 7 percent are born into deaf families. Whereas American Sign Language is the third most widely used language in the United States. Whereas deaf people do not feel that they are disabled in any way, where in fact, we must recognize that deaf people can do anything except hear. Whereas 466 million people worldwide have a disabling hearing loss, and 48 million Americans have significant hearing loss, of these, almost 6 million are profoundly deaf. Whereas, to learn more about types, the types of educational programs and support services that are available to deaf and hard-of-hearing children. Whereas, we believe Boynton Beach's deaf, deaf-blind, hard-of-hearing, and late deafened individuals should have the same access to many benefits and opportunities available to live, work, play, and communicate in Boynton Beach. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the week of September 24, 2018, as Deaf Awareness Week.
Deaf Services. I'm honored to be recognized for all the hard work we've done in the City of Boynton Beach. Thank you so much for respecting and honoring all of the deaf people in our community. We appreciate full inclusion. We could not do what we do without Debbie Majors and your ADA Coordinator. She's just amazing, but also the support from everybody in the city. I brag about Boynton Beach everywhere I go, and I hope that other cities will learn to mimic what you do here in Boynton Beach, because you're, you know, you're the champion on compliance. So thank you very much on behalf of the whole deaf community. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Debbie, excuse me, I need to ask her a question. In Boynton, how many hearing impaired people do we have?
Deaf, deaf people, not hearing impaired.
All right, what, Debbie?
Deaf people on the list of, that Debbie has, there are 64?
68.
68, I'm sorry, 68 residents in Boynton Beach that we are aware of, that live in Boynton Beach, that are deaf and communicate in sign language. That's not the hard-of-hearing, that's just the deaf community.
68, thank you.
Thank you.
And if I, if I could, for just a second, my name's Debbie Majors, I'm the Grants and ADA Coordinator for the City of Boynton Beach, and I just wanted to quickly capture what the city has accomplished this year in 2018 to be more inclusive of our deaf community. We have held a fire safety expo, we have held a text to 911 for emergency workshops, we are constantly training staff in our law enforcement and first responder staff, as well as our general employees. We have held silent painting parties where our instructor in the Recreation and Parks Department is deaf, and this is a means of employment for her. We have hurricane preparedness workshops and expo at the Boynton Beach Mall, also with interpreters. We've held flood awareness workshops with interpreters. We have had a Stop the Bleed and CPR class for individuals who are deaf. We are also teaching American Sign Language beginner and intermediate classes for employees. And today, there was a health fair at the Azale Hester Jr. Community Center, where we had interpreters and several members of our deaf community attended to get more information on their health and well-being. In November, one of our final events for this effort will be active shooter training for Palm Beach County Association of the Deaf. So not only all of our deaf residents in Boynton Beach, but all of the members in the Palm Beach County Association of the Deaf will receive active shooter training through our police department. And if I could at this moment, just have, we have several representatives from our, our police department here tonight to personally hand out our Pullover Pals, which is the item that we have purchased, and the Pullover Pal, I'm going to let our law enforcement officers say a little bit about that, but I would like to have June McMahan, who is the past president for Florida Association of the Deaf, and also a Boynton Beach resident, come up, please, June, and also Joel Silberstein, who is on the Board of the Palm Beach County Association of the Deaf, also lives near, in Boynton. And these two people have been instrumental in us connecting to the Boynton Beach community and residents who are deaf, and helping us bridge that communication gap. So I wanted to bring them up and let our law enforcement take over.
During Deaf Awareness Month, the Boynton Beach Police Department is expanding its efforts to improve communications with residents who are deaf or hard-of-hearing. The latest initiative is the purchase of the Pullover Pal, a canvas waterproof pocket that folds over the driver's window for the officer to see immediately when approaching the vehicle. It contains a card that tells the officer that the driver is deaf, and it also holds insurance and registration documents. Also comes in different colors as well.
If they do, might get a photo.
So for those residents who have come this evening to receive their Pullover Pal, we are going to be in the lobby all evening, so you're welcome to stay for the rest of the commission meeting, or if you cannot stay and you need to go, you can come on out into the lobby, and we'll be happy to help you now. And thank you so much, Commission, City Manager, Mayor, we thank you so much for this.
Our next proclamation is for September 28, 2018, as Childhood Cancer Awareness Day. Proclamation, whereas the National Cancer Institute and the American Cancer Society report cancer as the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between zero and age 19, and whereas childhood cancer spares no one, affecting kids from every race, color, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status, and whereas each year 150 children in Palm Beach County are diagnosed with cancer, and whereas childhood cancer does not just affect the child, but also impacts parents, grandparents, loved ones, friends, neighbors, and communities, and whereas a diagnosis of childhood cancer has a devastating financial and emotional impact on the family, and whereas Pediatric Oncology Support Team was founded to raise awareness and advocate for childhood cancer fighters, and to provide the child and their families with the emotional and financial help they desperately need, and whereas September has been designated as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and the Pediatric Oncology Support Team is asking all those who live or work in Palm Beach County to go gold on September 28, 2018, to help raise awareness of childhood cancer. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim the 28th Day of September, 2018, as Childhood Cancer Awareness Day. Do we have someone accepting the proclamation? I don't see anyone. Next is the announcement that Palm Beach County Property Appraiser's Office will be manning a table at the senior center to provide Boynton Beach residents with information on how to file for homestead exemption from 1:30 to 2:30 on the following dates, Tuesday, October 9, 2018, Tuesday, November 13, 2018, and Tuesday, November, Tuesday, December 11, 2018. One of the other announcements that's not on the agenda is the RPM, Route Performance Maximization, that Palm Tran is having. There is a kickoff special on September 29, and that there will be introductory free Palm Tran fixed route bus rides, I believe, on October 1. So I just want to let everyone know about that. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin with your item?
Yeah. The item on the agenda tonight is to use my community, community support funds to support a local Boynton Beach Rugby Football Club, and the coach and founder of the club, Coach Simon is here, so if you'll indulge us, I believe he's got a couple things to say, and a brief presentation as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
State your name and address.
My name is Shawn Simon. I'm a Boynton Beach resident. My address is 3780 Max Place, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33436. I want to thank the commission for having me tonight and giving me the opportunity to present. I'm excited for everybody to hear a little bit about rugby and about our program here in Boynton Beach.
Shawn, I don't think it's coming up on the screens just yet.
If I work the mouse over.
No, no, no. I think Colin, or do you know how to help? Or John?
It's John. I don't know how to do it. Put it on slideshow.
Well, you're going to have to inform us without the presentation, I guess.
He might be able to fix it.
Okay. Boynton Beach Rugby is a 100% volunteer-driven youth nonprofit organization. When my wife and I moved to Boynton Beach about three years ago, I wanted to invest in the community and do something that would provide more student athlete opportunity for the demographic here. I wanted to tap into the resource that I know best, which is rugby. And I wanted to devise a model that would be a little bit more, create a little bit more opportunity than the typical model statewide. The typical model is a travel team model. Rugby is going through mainstreaming process and my hope was to create a rec league model to make it athletically inclusive and to pair that with economic inclusion as well. You can see here a quick illustration of how our model is set up as a rec league representing four zones that operate within four quarters of the greater Boynton Beach area. And then it also represents our four founding principles of athletic inclusion, economic inclusion, core values, and score and school partnerships. I'm going to run through a few slides that kind of show off each of those founding principles. Our athletic inclusion comes from the fact that we are a rec league as opposed to a travel team. There are a lot of student athletes falling through the cracks that can't make a certain team because of their athleticism and can't afford a certain team because of their economic situation. Our matrix teams internally provide plenty of roster space and plenty of playtime for anybody that wants to play, irregardless of their level of maturity or athleticism. And our travel team still incorporates that high performance component. Our matrix teams are modeled after the four local high schools with which we hope to build partnerships, the Tigers, the Eagles, the Cobras, and the Chiefs from the four public schools that surround Boynton Beach. Our travel team is modeled after South Tech's mascot, the Bulldogs. Everybody rotates onto the travel team irregardless of their level of skill. That way, everybody gets the opportunity to experience high-performance play. We added a high school girls' component this year. And we added a coed youth component this year, all ages under 14, play coed. Our goal of economic inclusion was to not have any kid be held out because they can't afford to play rugby. We don't charge any participation fees at all. There is a fee with USA Rugby, our governing body, that money does not go to us. We encourage families to cover that themselves, but we find sponsors for those families that cannot. Many kids do play without paying a penny. Our minority, based on the data from U.S. News &amp; World Report of the four public high schools that we service, is 75% minority and economically disadvantaged. We have a 65% based on those schools. In all reality, I would not, I would not wait to say that we, within our program, are at least 95% minority and probably 90% economically disadvantaged. Economically disadvantaged, meaning that they're running on free and reduced lunches at school. Our budget, two years ago, was just over $7,000 and our second year this past year was just over $13,000. I'm imagining, now that we're at about 100 kids, that between 100 and 150 players, we can run at about 15 grand yearly. All of our financials are transparent and posted on boyntonrugby.org/financials and are there per item for the community to see where our money comes from and where it goes. A lot of our funds go to outfitting our players. As you can see there, jerseys represent one of our big expenses and we have a set for each of our teams. So far, two years in, we've been able to buy a set for each team. That's one age group out of four matrix teams. We're getting to the point where we have three and four age groups per matrix team now. So, we have a lot of fundraising ahead of us. Our volunteers, excuse me, our coaches and our managers are all volunteers. We are 100% volunteer-driven. There are no paid employees. And in fact, many of these people pay out of pocket to help the program survive and run. These are three of my assistant coaches. All have made contributions in time and money. We hold dear to heart a core value system that we try to instill in our young athletes. We go so far as to, instead of wearing sponsors on the backs of our shirts and jerseys, to wear our core values on our backs. These are just some examples. Our BEAST Creed, which is an acronym for Brotherhood, Ethics, Academics, Sportsmanship, and Teamwork, and my deeds define me, are some slogans that we wear on our shirts. If you see Boynton Rugby shirts around town, you'll see these slogans on the back of them. We encourage community service and help our students achieve as much community service as possible, this for their 20 hours to graduate from high school and for, I think, 200 for Bright Futures scholarships. One of the programs we're participating in now is to have our high school students serve as volunteer coaches at the local boys and girls clubs of the Palm Beach County. They go there and run rugby clinics and tally up hours and have a great time. We take our youth on field trips. We try to make field trips, the kind of trips that will encourage kids to reach for the stars and follow the path to opportunities that rugby can provide for them. We take them to colleges to watch college games. We meet at locations to watch college games and hopefully through doing this, they aspire to play rugby in college and try to challenge themselves to compete for college scholarships. This is one instance where Jamar played, went and met the team at FAU. Our school partnerships are panning out well. We're two years in. We are partnered with South Tech, that was our first big supporter. We're partnered with Park Vista, Atlantic Community High School, and Santa Lucius Community High School now. I have not gotten to Boynton Beach yet, but it is in the pipeline and we are currently working on it. All of these schools support us, their administration supports us, they allow the students to create on-campus informational clubs. And of course, the students that play for our community program are on these clubs on campus and can recruit and promote the sport on campus to get more people involved. At South Tech Academy, we have good support from our superintendent, Mr. Kidd, our assistant superintendent, Mr. Bodges, and our principal, Mrs. Tureen. That's just a picture of some of the events that we hold on campus with some of the students. At Santa Lucius High School, this is one of my assistant coaches running a recruiting booth, that's Principal Gideon, and Coach Eric Mashburn. At Atlantic High School, another recruiting booth with the informational club at that public high school, that's Coach Eric again, recruiting with the mascot and with some of our players who attend that school and have created their own informational club there. We are partnered with the Parks and Rec, of course, with Boynton Beach. We thank you very much for the reception that we've had with you over the last two years. We work extensively at Ezell Hester Club with Todd and it was originally Wally Majors that started that relationship for me. I thank you very much. Palm Beach County, we are fair partnered with them and we operate extensively at Calusa Park. And we just started working through Tom Quietec with the Delray Beach Parks and Recreation as well. So, we're forming relationships and partnerships countywide and in the greater Boynton Beach area and the cities that surround us as well. We just partnered with the Sports Commission and George in the Sports Commission has brought us in and is helping us plan future tournaments that we hope to hold at Ezell Hester and Calusa Park. And I just wanted to throw in a series of slides here that demonstrate how rugby is mainstreaming in the United States and that because of that mainstreaming, it's one of the reasons I consider it a sport of opportunity right now and something that will create more opportunity for kids and especially for those that are falling through the cracks and maybe are disillusioned with the mainstream sports out there. We do have an All-Stars team, a high-performance team, that our best players can try out for and make. If they make that team, they have a much more likely chance of being scouted for college. Collegiate rugby is now mainstreaming to the degree that it's on NBC, it's on mainstream television, boys and girls, college rugby. Professional rugby started last year, Major League Rugby. It had a successful season and it is prepared to start its second season this year. I have friends from college who have just signed contracts for the Major League Rugby entity and that means that it's going places. USA Rugby is competing on the international scene and is doing better every year in the various tournaments, men and women. And last year, rugby re-entered the Olympics for the first time in some 90 years, I think. And it was in Rio in 2016. And all of this just means that there is great opportunity for student athletes if we bring one more sport, especially one that's athletically inclusive and economically inclusive to the youth of our community. Thank you very much. Thank you on behalf of the high school boys, the high school girls, the coed youth, and all of the families that are involved. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any questions.
I have one. Why do you find time to do this?
My wife gets about five minutes a day and she's a painter luckily, so she's very busy too. Outside of being a dental hygienist, she comes home and paints all evening. So, if it weren't for that, I'd probably be in big trouble.
Right, sir. I'd just like to say, you know, since you said Ezell Hester, which is in Boynton, I'd like to say, you know, I want to be the first one to say thank you for what you're doing for the youth here in our community, not only our community, but also in Palm Beach County. My hat goes off to you. My hat also goes off to Commissioner Katz for wanting to give you a big O2,000. I think it's money well spent though.
Thank you.
I also commend you for what you do for our youth. Just one quick question, do you play those seven-on-seven? I see it on TV a lot now.
The Olympic version has only accepted sevens, seven-on-seven. Rugby also has tens and fifteens. The international version that you usually see during the regular season is fifteen-on-fifteen, but we play all three versions.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Boys and girls.
Commissioner Katz?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Coach Simon. I've known him for some time when I came down to Florida and I'd played rugby in college up in Connecticut for a short period of time. And he was starting up youth leagues and men's leagues in North Palm Beach County. And it's, you know, it's, I think, the best way I can encapsulate it is, you know, everybody has something that they're obsessed with and wherever they go, they talk about it and they have to spread it and educate people on it. And, you know, that to me is, rugby is the thing that Coach Simon is obsessed with. And the beautiful thing about that is that he's not obsessed with it for himself. It's not something that gains him anything financially. He's obsessed with it to make sure other people become obsessed with it and are given the opportunities in it. I can say from experience, it's the most egalitarian sport there is. It doesn't matter who you are, where you come from, as long as you got a pair of cleats on and a mouthguard and it doesn't matter if you weigh 100 or 300 pounds, you can go out there and you can do what you're supposed to do. And it's a great time and it builds brotherhood and I think it's great for Boynton Beach. So, I thank him for that.
Thank you very much.
Motion to approve?
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
My first request is for $200 of my community support funds to Healthy Aquatics Marine. It's a nonprofit located on Congress. Myself, along with city staff, had an opportunity to go to the facility. I suggest everyone make some time to go there. They are actually growing coral and providing, doing scientific experiments trying to find super coral that can withstand the rising temperatures and acidification of our oceans. So, that is why I'm requesting the $200.
Second?
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Saying none, motion passes unanimously. The next is for South Florida Sanctuary. I met James over at the Community Caring Center's incubator last month and he was explaining to me how he gives people a hot meal and bathing. And I know that a lot of the times, you know, in order to get people off the streets, you have to have an incentive. And this is an incentive to get the mental health that they need or because, you know, living on the street normally means that there is some mental health issue going on. So, I'd like also to distribute $200 of my community support funds, which would be the remaining last $200.
Motion to approve?
Second?
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Saying none, motion passes unanimously. Moving back to public audience, individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record.
I think Herb Suss, 1711 Woodford, Boynton Beach. I'll pull a surprise on everybody tonight, going to be the report cards. Commissioner Katz, A+ and the funny guy.
Where?
Commissioner McCray, A+.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Romulus, A+.
Vice Mayor.
And I'm sorry, going to lose you, Joe, Commissioner, A+. And as far as Mayor Grant, A+ to a little cube, that's even a little higher. I want to say that this is the best commission that, since I've been down to many meetings, this is the best commission that we, in my judgment, we've ever had. And I wish you all well, you've earned it, but I'll be back watching you. And Joe, lots of luck up in Tallahassee.
Thank you, Herb.
The other thing I wanted to bring out, this state, Florida, has important elections coming up in November. We have a running for governor, DeSantis, racist, he proved it already, twice and over again, running for senator, the governor, who has been indicted on a big amount, over several million dollars, maybe more. The algae growing along the coast, he's, there's no contest. This is an important election statewide. Country-wise, you know where I stand. Come out and vote. The situation with this Supreme Court nominee, he lied four times, four times, and now they want to, and both the head of the Republicans, Hatch and his counterpart, in 1991 with Anita Hill, the first things that both of them said, we're going to have the FBI investigate what happened. What are they doing to this poor woman? They want her to send in advance questions by tomorrow. If they get that by tomorrow, over the weekend, they're going to grill her if she shows up. It's not right. I mean, what they did in 91 to Anita Hill, they had the FBI investigate. I don't know what their hurry is, I know what it is. Got to watch Mitch McConnell also. And the Republicans, again, are complicit. They're very complicit in what they do. So, just remember, we got important elections in this state and we have important elections federally. Let's turn the clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, Mr. Suss, Mr. Suss, excuse me, before you leave, I personally like to tell you thank you for your report cards. you for your report cards. I probably receive more report cards than anybody sitting up here. Every time you say report cards, my heart go thump, thump, but I want to tell you, sir, thank you for being honest with us. Thank you.
Well, you all earned it, but I'll be watching. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I also want to comment that I would have loved to have Mr. Suss as a professor when I was in graduate school. I would have loved to have you as my real professor. You seem to be an easy grader. Thank you, Herb.
Yes.
Hello, Mayor, Commissioners and staff. My name is Joe Russo. I'm at 313 Day Terrace Street, West Palm Beach, Florida, and I'm here today as a representative of the Palm Beach Technology Association, which I am the executive director of. Here with my colleague Diana, who, if there's one thing I know in the world, it's being a room of people smarter than yourself, so I brought a Fulbright Scholar to join me today. And I'm here to tell you about a little project we're working on with Mr. David Scott called 1909. And I do have some packets to pass around for you, for your records with my card and the information about it. But earlier this year, myself, Mr. Scott, and members of the Business Development Board's Entrepreneur Task Force started looking at gaps in our small business and entrepreneurial ecosystems. Among those, and you'll see them highlighted on the first page there, represent affordable workspace, consistent mentorship, business education, and access to capital. These are things unified throughout Palm Beach County as barriers to entry for people looking to develop their businesses here in Palm Beach County and, most importantly, here in the city of Boynton Beach. So together with these, this group of people and with the cities of Boca Raton, Delray Beach, West Palm Beach, and Lake Park, as well as Florida Atlantic University, the Knight Foundation, and the Business Development Board, we put together a plan that we've worked with Mr. Scott on that is called 1909, which alludes to the founding year of the great county of Palm Beach County. In that, we targeted three main areas that we're going to be focusing on, including coworking, acceleration, and mentorship throughout Palm Beach County, not only starting here in 2018, but hopefully for years to come. Most importantly, we want people to build something that others cannot ignore here in the Palm Beaches. Be successful for what their, for what their crafts and their skills are. In that packet, you also see a sticker that says "Made in PVC." This is a brand that we started that in part is meant to encourage pride with the companies that are here made and built in Palm Beach County. We've trademarked this and we're trying to really propose with the city that we create a unified vision for the future of the entrepreneurial ecosystem in the Palm Beaches. So we have been working specifically with Mr. Scott, and you'll read it there in the later stages of your packet, is a 25-person accelerator cohort specifically built for Boynton Beach residents for the needs of this community, something that we can bring to the table here in 2019, that also on the tail end of it has tangible dollars that these companies can receive in completion of this program. By using best practices that are derived from incubators and accelerator programs around the world, we hope that this program, with the support of the city, with the support of our community, can build businesses and build futures here in the city of Boynton Beach. My card is in there. If I could provide any other information or answer any questions, I would be glad to do so.
I have one question. I'd like to say to you, sir, thank you first for bringing this to us. I'd like to say to Mr. Scott, I'm one of your biggest critics, but I would like to say, sir, tonight, thank you, but at least I see some fruits of your labor. I do want to say thank you. Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I'm not sure if Mr. Russo knew that he would be on a three-minute time limit, but I would perhaps ask that this commission adds this as an agenda item at a future time for you to actually come up and slow down and give us a presentation and actually help us understand and help the public understand what is that you're doing and how this can benefit the residents and entrepreneurs and business owners in our community, because I believe you're doing great work and I'd like to see, give us the opportunity to see that and fully appreciate it for the work that you guys are putting in. I think this was a little rushed and a great presentation with the time that you had and the information that you provided us, but I would like to give you a little bit more time and really help give that a little bit more emphasis.
It would be my honor to do so.
Mayor, would you be okay with that?
Oh, yeah, I was just about to second that. You know, I've been to your facility up in West Palm Beach and I think it's a great idea to bring that down to Boynton Beach and so I'm all for this project moving forward.
And with that said, actually, Mayor, I do have a little present for you. This makes you an honorary member of the Palm Beach Tech Association with the T-shirt and all, so I'll pass that around for you.
I'll come get it.
Oh, okay.
He's afraid we won't get, we'll give it to him.
It won't make it down. It might stop with me. So I'd like to make sure we move forward on what I mentioned. Can we get a date or something we could work out with staff?
Staff can contact him.
Sure, I'll work with Mr. Scott and Mr. Russo and we'll see when he's available to come see us.
Yes, I would appreciate that. Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no more public comments, moving on to administrative. And I do not believe, oh, we have one, Lawrence Siegel for the Senior Advisory Board, the only applicant, I'd like to nominate him.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda, is there an item that someone would like to pull for consent agenda? Seeing none?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, consent agenda is approved unanimously. Bids and purchases over $100,000. Proposed resolution number R-18136, authorize the city manager to sign task order to Corolo Engineers in accordance with RFQ General Consulting Service Contract, scopes category C awarded to, by commission, on August 7, 2018 for GIS work in connection with utility infrastructure management, not to exceed $189,135.
I'm going to vote for this, but can I just get some information from the staff?
Our utility director, we dropped interim, by the way, Joe Paterneady. Congratulations, Joe.
I appreciate the vote of confidence and I won't let you guys down. Thank you.
Okay, just explain a little bit what we're spending money for, why you won't let us down.
Sure. This is our base map upgrades. This is the base for all the technology that we use. It identifies all the infrastructure that we maintain and operate throughout the city limits. This task order is help, to help verify the existing components in the field and identify that and bring it into this database, this geographic system. It also provides some, creation of some applications for collecting this information. So this is what this is for and it's for ongoing upgrading our systems.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to proposed resolution number R-18137, approve the property casualty and workers' compensation insurance coverage renewals with preferred government insurance trusts for an annual amount of $944,327 and authorize city manager to sign all required documents for the term of the policy, October 1, 2018 to September 30, 2019.
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item C, approve utilizing the City of Delray's agreement based on ITB for the procurement of bulk gasoline and diesel fuel with Macmillan Oil Company LLC of Hialeah, Florida, for the city's fleet for the period of October 1, 2018 through June 6, 2020 to coincide with the award period of Delray Beach. The estimated annual expenditure is $1 million. The City of Delray's procurement process satisfies the City of Boynton Beach competitive bid requirements.
Motion to approve our discussion?
Second.
Thank you.
My question is for staff. Real easy, how much did we spend last year in the budget?
This year to date, $908,000.
This is going to be enough money?
Yes.
Thank you. I like the way you say yes. Okay, I'm good.
I have a question. Andrew, these prices that, once we get into these contracts, do they fluctuate according to the price of fuel when it goes up and down?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Seeing no more comments, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Did you have one?
Not on this topic, but while I have the Director of Public Works here, my chair is broken, I just want to let you know that. It's not for yous.
We will take care of it.
While we're giving you kudos, I don't have my eyeglasses on, but thanks for the light. I didn't carry that around, okay?
You're welcome.
All right.
Keeping you more work to do.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing. Jim, which one's the first one we're doing?
Let's see. A is tabled, B is tabled, C.
C. Approve 125 East Boynton Beach Boulevard, major site plan modification to construct a one-story, 1,226-square-foot addition to an existing 1,780-square-foot office building and related site improvements at 125 East Boynton Beach Boulevard in the C3 zoning district. Applicant Lamar Drillick.
Second.
Hi, I'm Lee Moore's husband, Craig Drillick, 9165 Talway Circle, Boynton Beach.
Okay. Anybody who intends to testify in this proceeding, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
And we have a first and second, do we have to listen to a presentation?
You know, this is my next-door neighbor, so I kind of want to.
Oh, all right, well. Bet I ran away.
You're right across the easement from me.
Ain't wrong you bow out the door.
I introduced myself earlier, my name is Craig Drillick, a public adjuster. I'm the owner of Property Damage Consultants. For those of you that don't know what a public adjuster is, we represent the policyholder when they've got damage to their properties and provide them representation, equal representation against their insurance companies. I've been a public adjuster for 17 years, worked for the insurance companies for 13 years before that. I've been renting a office space in Delray Beach, purchased this property a little over a year ago and with the intention of making this our main office. For those of you that don't know the property, it's located directly across from the current city hall and there's a photo of what was there previously. It was a gun shop. We plan on converting the gun shop into office space. That's a rendering of the facade of the facility. We plan on occupying two-thirds of the space and renting out approximately a third of the space to a tenant. And the site plan has already been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we're asking for approval of the addition onto the existing building along with a facelift and obviously bringing the building up to all current building codes.
Um, yes, regarding the irrigation that's going on, I guess for the, currently it says that you need to propose your own irrigation. Are we going to provide potable water or is it reclaimed water?
This is on the east side, so it's either a well or it's potable water, although we will have reuse close by, so if we can get reuse to this customer, we will.
Because it's currently with the city's irrigation system?
Yeah, well, and we need to bring reuse down and when we do, Town Square, we may have reuse available for that side of the street. We're still working on those plans, but we're.
So I would just make that subject to the city's ability to allow reclamation water?
Subject to, meaning if it's not available, it's not approved or when it is available, it needs to be connected?
Basically, if it's available for him to have reclamation water, to have the reclamation And would that include, you know, running the pipes to his property or?
It's just like potable water service, if it goes by, you set a meter and they connect to it.
Okay.
It's no different than hooking up to potable water.
Is that something you'd be willing to do or?
It's less expensive.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, he says.
Sir, how many employees do you have?
I have five other adjusters that work for me. They're technically independent contractors.
Working out of your office?
Correct. And a secretary and my wife is the bookkeeper and.
Boss lady?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Sir, my question is real simple, you know, after we approve this tonight, when can I expect to see, it's in my district, gun and ammo off of that wall? Because I get nervous when I pass by there. How fast do you plan on removing that? Gun and ammo on the thing that you flashed up there? I know where the building is.
It's gone.
It's gone already? Gee, well, me, I'd have to approve this then. We'll approve it. Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Katz?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for selecting Boynton Beach and selecting Boynton Beach Boulevard as the future home of your business and we appreciate you coming in and fixing up a building and contributing to our local economy, so thank you very much.
Welcome.
You'll have a good view of the, you know, demolition of city hall and the new Town Square. Do I have a, was, I know we got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
Mayor, just to clarify, is that with the noted conditions of approval, Exhibit C?
Noted condition of approval with the, I guess, basically to allow for the ability to have reclamation water at the site.
Yeah, that would be an additional condition to be added by staff.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Yes, we're doing D today?
Jim? 27, yes, sir. Ordinance 18027, an ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida authorizing abandonment of an unimproved 10.2-foot-wide alley running north and south from northeast Ninth Avenue for a distance of approximately 148 feet. More particularly described herein, subject to staff comments, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer which shall be recorded with this ordinance and the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz? Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Romulus?
Nice call.
Yes. Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
And Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
The vote is five to zero.
Moving on to.
Mayor, excuse me, I realize we're working out all the bugs here in our new move, but you know, at the commission, I'm just saying, is anybody y'all could like, make sure these things will be working before we get in here, you know?
We're trying to work on that, absolutely. I've asked the same question, we're trying to streamline it as best as possible.
And yeah, you're doing excellent, I'm just, I got to go home, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on to item E, approve Town Square Phase One major site plan modification to construct a 109,085-square-foot city hall library building and 827-space parking garage associated with right-of-way improvements and recreational amenities on an 8.91-acre site. on an 8.91 acre site. The applicant is the City of Boynton Beach.
Good evening, Amanda Basile with the Planning Department. If it's okay with the board, I would like to talk about both this item and the community design appeals together.
Yes.
Okay, even though the city is the applicant, these are still quasi-judicial. Anybody who intends to testify, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Do.
Thank you.
So first, I want to go over some of the basics of the approved master plan that was approved several months ago. The site we are looking at is the Town Square project. It is approximately 15 acres. It was rezoned to have a land use of mixed-use medium and a zoning designation of MU3. And the site stretches from Boynton Beach Boulevard south to southeast 2nd Avenue, and it goes from Seacrest to First Street. This is the image of the approved master plan. It has three different parts. We will be looking and hopefully approving today the Phase One, which is everything highlighted in red, and I will go into detail into what's included within that, within that phase. And there are two other phases, two and three, which we will look at at a separate time. So for today, the master plan, for today, the three requests in front of you are the major site plan modification for Phase One of Town Square and two community design appeals that have to do with the enlarged setback of City Hall, one being from Ocean Avenue and the other being from Seacrest. So just to orient you, this is the Phase One area, so north will be up. There are two existing buildings within this phase, including the old high school and the children's schoolhouse museum. There are two proposed buildings within this phase, the City Hall Library structure as well as the proposed parking garage. And there are public amenities, including three green spaces, the Green, Cape Harbor Park, and Kingdoms Playground. Within this, there's also right-of-way improvements happening to Seacrest Boulevard, Ocean Avenue, and southeast First Street. I'm sorry, Avenue. So this is the footprint of the proposed City Hall building. It is connected into the master plan with sidewalks along all rightsways and one connecting to the green, which is just east of the building. There are public entrances. That's what the blue boxes represent. So there are public entries from both Ocean and southeast First Avenue and also from the green area. So the front of the building, the real front of the building faces the green and it's designed such, and we have designed enlarged public rims on Ocean Avenue. There are also some of the more public uses along Ocean and Seacrest, including some of the community spaces and the incubator business space that's included in the City Hall. So this is the view of the proposed building from Ocean Avenue looking south. The roof heights go from 27 feet and 6 inches, which is closest to Ocean, and the towering component, which is the highest point of the building, reaches 74 feet and 6 inches. This is the view from the green, so we are east of the building, looking towards Seacrest. This is essentially the main entrance or the kind of gathering space for the master plan. In front of you, central to the building, there would be two entrances, and then the two other public entrances are both to the north and south of this building.
I have a question.
Sure.
That is facing Seacrest.
No, this is facing the green. So we are standing in the green, looking at Seacrest.
Okay, let me ask the question. The building, will that be facing Seacrest?
The face, the facade that we're looking at is facing the green. This is the green.
Is there an entrance on Seacrest?
We, I will get there, yes.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to.
Okay, yeah, well, yes, I will get there. So this is facing the green. We are, Seacrest is behind the building at this point. So I'm on the main green space where the amphitheater will be, and I am looking at the building. This is the view from southeast First Avenue, which is essentially the location of the southern parking garage. So I'm about where the exit to the parking garage is, looking at the building. So you can see that the two, does this work? Okay, so you can see, oh wait, sorry. Ah ha. Okay, so you can see that this entrance right here would be the main entrance into the commission chambers, and this would be the main entrance into the City Hall, the City Hall and the library from the garage. That would be the entrance that you use. This would be the view from Seacrest Boulevard. So now I am standing on Seacrest Boulevard, looking at the building. There are a couple of conditions of approval that talk about the treatment of this facade, one being the revisions to the bus shelter to be more in line with the architecture of the building. There are some revisions talking about these amendments to these sunshades and how they integrate into the structure. And we are also proposing or making a condition that we propose a trellis that goes along here and connects into the bus shelter and then wraps around. So if anyone is using public transit, they would kind of go along the trellis in order to enter the commission chambers.
When you say trellis, an open trellis or a closed?
It would be, it would be like a shade structure, so it would be an open trellis. And there is a condition of approval that we will talk about just slightly later, that there are vines that grow up that trellis. So we're looking for like a green wall effect. It won't be necessarily completely rain resistant, rain would go through it. Sure.
What is that entrance to the left of the picture there?
Yeah, what's that? So that would be the entrance to the community rooms and the incubator space. So that is the most kind of public area of the City Hall. That is not a City Hall function. So the incubator space and the community rooms. This is the interior shot of the City Hall Library. This is the lobby space. So we have two community design appeals that are going along with this footprint. The first one is for Ocean Avenue. Typically, within the mixed-use districts, we look for buildings that are closer to the front of the street and create more of an urban setting. We do allow deviations to that, or we recommend approval to deviations that allow for an expanded public realm, and that is what is being proposed here. The deviation goes from 12 feet 1 inch to 49 feet and 1 inch. So this would be instead of a maximum of 15 feet. And the second deviation is similar in nature, except on Seacrest. This building is set back 35 feet and 4 inches, and at its furthest point, it's 82 feet and 10 inches. So the next building that is proposed within Phase One is the parking garage. The parking garage holds 827 parking spaces. There are four entries into the parking garage. Two are one ways in, which are the two that are further south, and the two-way entries and exits are the two that are off southeast First Avenue.
So the cars, there's an entrance and exit through the building?
No, so the next building, and I'll talk about that in a second too, the next building is in part of Phase Two, and there will be a driveway that is in between, so far, between the building and the parking garage.
Okay.
So these are the current renderings of the parking garage. And the height right now is going from the top of parapet is 57 feet and 3 inches, and its maximum height of the tower is at 68 feet and 2 inches. One of the conditions of approval, and I note on the plan state that we typically do not approve parking garages without a wrap around it. In this case, since there is a master plan governing the construction of this project, we are allowing, we are recommending approval, however, there is a condition that states that if there is the situation where this is built and in operation before the Phase Two residential wrap is constructed, that there are some interim design guidelines that would have to be met, including green walls, arts, and architectural enhancements to the building.
Or, excuse me, so that we're going to require these if it gets built before Phase Two?
Built and used before Phase Two.
And so then will those things be used after Phase Two gets built?
It depends on the lag. This is really to protect us from having a standalone parking garage and nothing around it. So if anything happens and Phase Two is not built, or there's a long lag between Phase Two being built, we do not have a bare garage facing all sides of the rightsway.
Okay, and so.
I believe the plan is, right now, that there shouldn't be a lag, so we are not foreseeing that situation to happen.
So what is the definition of lag then?
Um, I believe it's written, and I think the language is right on your screen. That's really small for me to see, but I think it says that the interim design.
Yeah, the only, the only thing is I request that the commission determine what a lag is, you know, before we require this.
So Colin Groff, I'm representing the applicant.
Thank you.
Which is y'all.
Which is us, us.
Us. What we're trying to do is the code, remember, there's two things we're doing here. We're building it. We also have to meet our code. So the code requires parking garages, if they're standalone, to be wrapped by an architectural feature. So if, and we don't believe there's any chance of this happening, but if Phase Two is not built, there's a condition that says you have to wrap the garage. The lag is defined in there. We pick the date. You can change that. We know it's moving forward because they're already coming in for permitting, so there's not, there's nothing out there that says it's not going to happen, but the code requires us to comment on it because it's a requirement of the code. So the condition is, is as a requirement of the code, if we don't build all these other things, you have to wrap it. And what that does is that means we are in compliance with the code. That's really all it is. It's really more of a regulatory issue, not a reality.
And the way the language, just so you're comfortable, the way the language reads right now is if the southern parking garage is completed before the approval of the Phase Two residential building, additional architectural treatments and facades would be required, and it goes through what those are. So they actually, it's not, it just needs to be approved.
Building permits issued or?
Approved.
The Phase Two has to be approved.
So the site plan would have to be approved.
Which you will be seeing here in six to eight weeks.
Okay, thank you.
So we are recommending approval. There are conditions of approval from staff, and there were three additional conditions that were added by the PND Board. Staff is recommending slight revisions to those conditions, and I'll go through them. The first condition from the board was to add two additional handicap spaces in a specific location. Staff is recommended that be revised to provide additional handicap spaces wherever possible, just in case there's a spatial issue in putting them in that exact location. The second revision, or I'm sorry, the second condition was that they wanted to provide sweet almond bushes in place of a portion of fire bush plants, and we have revised that to read, provide appropriate plant species in order to attract butterflies, so again, leaving it a little bit more open for the landscape architect. And then the third, the third condition was to provide, again, two specific species of vines on the trellises, and our revision just says appropriate vine species. Through some research, we found that one of the species that was recommended is invasive, and there were some allergy issues with sweet almond, so we have just made them a little bit more open for design. So that is the end of the presentation. We are recommending approval based on the conditions, also subject to the conditions of approval and the three revisions to the Planning and Development Board conditions. We're here to answer questions. The team is here also, and the traffic engineer, if you guys have anything you'd like to know.
Team, since they're here.
So.
We have Mark Rickards.
Mark Rickards is from Kimley Horn, and Doug, if he'll stand up.
Doug is the landscape architect.
Back in the back.
Baker Barrios. And then traffic engineer Stephanie from Kimley Horn also.
From Kimley Horn.
Yes, Commissioner Katz followed by Casello.
Yeah, I would just say I support the staff recommendations to not make such rigid guidelines and go with what might be accommodatable for those three PND recommendations, so I support staff's language.
My issue would be with that trellis with vines. Trellis and vines, that's a maintenance that I'm not so sure we can take care of and make it look, you know, neat and presentable all the time, especially where it's going to be our flagship building here in Boynton Beach. That's my concern.
So we're working on that design. There's a lot of comments on that. So we're working on the design to bring something back that, there's two poles of this. Mine is meeting the regulatory requirements, but also meeting the desires of the owners, which you represent. So yes, we're working on that design. I think we have a good idea that won't, it's not necessarily all vines like you're thinking. It's just some plantings that makes them, give it some green, but easy to maintain. So that's our goal, is to make something very easy to maintain, but look nice. And the problem right now is what you saw in the picture does not complement the building. We want something that complements the building.
Correct.
So that's what we're working on.
Is there currently a bus stop there?
It's about, I don't know, 200 feet just north of there, but yes, there's a bus stop there.
So the bus stop 200 feet north, is that going away now?
Yes, that, this will be the bus stop.
Okay, because the reason why it's there is because it's the interchange of Boynton Beach Boulevard, and so now we're making them walk an extra 200 feet.
It's, you know, I said 200 feet. It's, it's, right now, it's in front of the library. It could be 50 feet away. It's mid-block. It's, the problem is right now, we don't have, First Street is not built. That's a new street being built.
So it sits north of First.
So it sits, right now, it sits north of there and south of Ocean. It's going to sit north of there and south of Ocean.
Okay, and so the one.
It's not going to be the exact location, but it's.
So the one that's across from the post office, is that still going to be there for the hotel, or is that?
That, that's Phase Three, and there'll be, that's Phase Three site plan, and yes, there'll be some more stops up in that area.
And so we're requesting a trellis from that all the way around, you know, explain the trellis location one more time.
You want to show the picture, man?
Yeah.
Basically, it's just the City Hall building, and if she got her pointer up, she could.
Oh, I'll show it from the actual rendering.
That's better.
So the trellis is being, is part of the recommendations of approval based on the community design appeal, and the thought behind it is that since we are setting back the building so far, we want to make sure that there is still a presence on the street because we expect people to be walking here. So in order to soften the transition from the street into the building and to partly buffer the parking lot that is in between the public realm and the building.
So they.
So right now, I believe the trellis would go, so the part of the building, the columns reach out to about here, and the trellis would probably extend from about this point and then go to the southern point of the corner. And then you would cross along northeast First. So I will show it in plan. It might be even easier to understand.
Would the trellis affect the driver's vision? Who are trying to take a left on?
There are some corner requirements that they won't be allowed to build in. I believe that that corner cut is 25 feet, so they won't be able to put it there unless it's high enough.
Well, I mean, if we have the vines, and so you're saying 25 feet from that corner is where it's going to stop?
I believe it's 25 feet. There is a line of sight triangle that we can't put anything within, to block vision.
So it's not too much further south then, and then the parking lot is going to be exposed?
Well, that's what that does, is that shields the parking lot from Seacrest slightly.
I mean, slightly, because the trellis is not.
So let me, Amanda does a great job.
There's no picture of the trellis, so we have no idea what it's going to look like.
We're going to bring that back to you. That's something, so we have a regulation that has a building setback line, and our City Hall building, because we want that parking lot there, it puts the building back further than what's allowed by code. The code says you have to be closer to the road. The code also allows design appeals if you do something else. So what we're trying, what the recommendation is, is we want to do something along Seacrest that complements the building, that also will meet that requirement for the setback that we're not meeting, to show that there's activity right along that sidewalk. So I wish I, we had a picture of it, because we're not, we don't have it finished design yet, so that's why we don't have a picture for it. We will bring that back to you, and because again, as owners, not for the regulatory part, but as owners, review and look at it and some comments, because we really do need it to match. It needs to blend into the building. It needs to be ease of maintenance, so it looks good, but it also needs to meet the requirements that our code that we rewrote requires. So there's a couple of things we're trying to do with it.
So we can make this subject to the trellis approval?
It's not, she mentioned the trellis. The trellis is not in the recommendation. What's in the recommendation is we have to do something along that wall. That's what the recommendation is. That's what the recommendation is. What we're telling you is, is right now, there's a, in Lake Worth, in front of City Hall, if you've seen it, there's a bus stop and stuff, and it's very similar to what looks, we think that would look really nice here, something very similar to that. So if you know what that is, that's kind of the model that we're looking at. So we'll bring that back to you, we can definitely send that out. So that's a, that's a design characteristic that's outside of regulatory controls.
So we need to approve a condition to the sign report, or the building requirement.
Right now, the trellis is part of the conditions of approval, and so is a requirement from the PND Board to have vines along that trellis.
Right, that was there, they wanted.
Now, that doesn't mean that it's just going to be a trellis. The trellis can be many different things. I've asked that there's no knee wall, I have asked that there are columns, but we are waiting for final designs back. If you want more detail or less detail, we can amend that condition of approval.
So I'd like to amend that condition of approval so that we have knowledge of what is going to be there before we approve whatever condition we need.
As the owner's representative, I'm fine with that.
Okay. The other thing that I was looking at is all the different plants regarding, you know, the 93 sable palms and what have you. Is there a possibility to get a little bit more variety and more shade trees?
So we've asked the architect to look everywhere where we can put a shade tree, we are. The palm trees are going to places where you can't afford that spread into the building. So you don't want to put a tree where it's in a tight location. So right now, I believe almost all of the palm trees are located in those locations where you, where there's not enough room between, between two things to put a full-size spread tree. So you put a palm tree, and it still gives you the green, but doesn't spread into the buildings. So I think we've done a pretty good job eliminating as many as possible and still meet the code. The direction that the landscape architect has put as many spread trees, you know, the regular trees rather than palm trees as possible. That was brought up by the PND Board, too, and we agree with that. As many as possible, what we're going to put in, but there are places where palm trees are the only trees that'll work, to meet the code.
Okay. And there's also the existing trees as well?
Do what?
The existing trees as well, the banyan trees that were saved.
So, yes, so there are, there's five trees that were required to be saved, and I think we're up to nine or 10 large trees. So the banions, the banions that you were standing under Tuesday, those are all being preserved. The caipock tree, of course, is being preserved. The banions that were south of where you were standing are being preserved. So we're preserving all of them. There's two that right now are on Ocean right directly in front of the library that can't be saved. One of them actually is not, is not doing well, so it's, and the other one, we just can't. It's one of the ones we just can't do anything with. It's just in, it's right in the wrong place.
And the caipock tree that's on, what was it, the northwest corner of Ocean Avenue and First Street?
I pictured that in my head.
It's right next to the amphitheater.
Right, that's in Phase 2, so I know they're still working on that. That's not in this phase.
Is it possible to save that tree and put it into this phase, or no, we can't do that?
We're working with the private developer on that. He hasn't given us a final answer yet.
Okay. All right.
The answer is, we'd like to, if we can do it.
Okay.
Moving is a challenge.
Moving it is a big challenge.
And surviving.
Correct, it's a very old tree. Commissioner Katz?
Yeah, to go back to the trellis, what material will that be built out of?
We don't know yet. We, the challenge we have is, is we're trying to meet the regulatory requirements and meet the requirements that we as owners, in representing the owners, want to do. So we have not finished designing. We're waiting on the architect to bring us that design, bring us materials, tell us what. We've given them some variations. We said we like the way this looks, we like the way that looks. And we use the word trellis, and trellis means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. My recommendation is let us show you so you can see what that means, because in my mind, I'm picturing three different kinds of trellis. There's the kind with little tiny, and it's very dense. There's a kind where it's just a roof, where it's more like a pergola, what I would call a pergola, call that a trellis.
Colin, can we actually ask the Arts Commission to make a recommendation?
That's where I was going, that if, it seems like because of the...
Because it's more of a design than anything else, and so if they feel something that would work within our code, I'd like to see, you know, have the applicant, you know, go to the Arts Commission and give them the options, and they'll make a recommendation to us.
So, yes, and I, again, it's your choice to do that. I want, we want our landscape architect, though, to come up with some options first, with the material. We've given them, we want material that's easy to maintain, and last...
I'd love that recommendation.
So we've given them all those guidance, they need to come back to us with some options, and then we can bring that forward and go through a process to say, yes, we like this, no, we don't. And those are important in these projects for the public portion of it.
Because a lot of people drive by Seacrest, and so...
And so just so everyone is on the same page, the actual condition of approval reads, at time of permitting, revise the proposed wall, because right now, there is like a knee wall with a decorative, like, iron rod fence on it. It says revise the proposed wall to a trellis along the western boundary of the parking lot on Seacrest. So trellis, what we're really trying to convey is something that is taller and takes up a little bit more of the vision than just a knee wall. That's really the only condition. After that, the design, we can add to this to be based on approval of the Arts Commission, if that's what the board wishes.
Again, why recommending is let us do that and bring it to these different boards and the public, and let them look at it, bring it to you, and get your feedback. And long as it meets that, the requirement of the code, and once we get the feedback, we can move forward. What we don't want to do is have to come back through a formal hearing, because we don't have the time, to be perfectly honest with you.
I understand. Commissioner Katz?
Right, so that's the direction I was going, because it seems like because of the need with the increased setback to put this out, I don't want it to be just like a forced structure meant to obscure the line of sight, like if there's a chance to make this public art or accentuate it with public art so that it's, it's not just a portion of a wall or the trellis, you know, whatever that may be, when it's presented to us. But yeah, I think that if it's going to be something that's meant to catch the eye or stop the eye from going beyond into the parking lot and the setback, it's an opportunity to create some sort of passive piece of public art where you drive by it and it's impressive, but it's part of the landscape. It's not just some forced divider or barrier.
Absolutely. The landscape architect here, he's hearing all of these comments, so he's taking those in.
Also, speaking of design, the lampposts, are those already picked out?
So we do have lighting picked out. We're, right now, we're proposing using FPNL lighting, so they would own and maintain, and we just pay a monthly bill because we're trying to get out of that business for the light posts in the building. We picked a light that's very similar to what you see in the picture. At time of permitting, that'll come back into staff to make sure it meets the requirements of the city. Andrew and I, in fact, we just got those yesterday. So in the next update that we'll send you, we'll put a picture of those in there. So we're trying to send you an update every week.
So we do not get to choose the lampposts?
Um...
That's, if you say, if you say we don't, then that's...
No, no.
Why wouldn't these match the ones that we voted on for Boynton Beach Boulevard? That lighting system, why wouldn't we tie that all in together?
So that's what we're doing, that's what we're working on.
So they look like the ones on Boynton Beach Boulevard?
Yes, so what we're working on in all of our lighting, all of this lighting and these architectural featured lighting, is we're trying to pick one for the city that we can put everywhere, so that's the same, so FPNL will maintain them. It's much better for the city, because right now, we own, like on Ocean, we own those light posts. It's very difficult for us to maintain light posts. We just...
But we voted on a design for Boynton Beach Boulevard.
Yes, you have.
Is that the same design you're going to be using in this?
We're using similar design, yes.
Similar?
The one you voted on for Boynton Beach Boulevard may actually not be available, so we may have to come back to you. So it may not be available.
And so the one that's on Seacrest is also going to be similar as well?
That's our, that's our goal, is to make them all the same, using an FPNL fixture that they maintain.
Okay, and we're going to make sure that they're...
Commissioner, I want to, it's very similar, I'm not sure anybody would tell the difference.
I want to know why it's not available, because we haven't even gotten it for Boynton Beach Boulevard yet, so why is it not available?
That's about years from now, too.
Available from FPNL. It would be available, I think, if we purchased them. And I'm going to be honest with you, I don't know exactly which fixtures they picked. I've looked at them, I've seen them. In my eye, they look the same, but I just saw the ones that are being proposed for this project, and I know the name of them are not the same, so I don't think they're the exact same. But we'll look at that and bring that back to you, I'll put that in the update, and I'll actually pull the ones from Boynton Beach Boulevard, too. Because they should be the same. They should be the same. I agree with you.
Just let me back up a little bit. The ones on Boynton Beach Boulevard, are we going to own them, or is FPL going to own them?
We are recommending that FPNL own them.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So is there any other comments from the Board? I guess we have one from the public, so now I'll be asking for any public comments regarding the site plan.
Herb S. 1711 Wood Fine. The two Commissioners Katz and Casillo, you brought up a very important part. The trellis bothers me, the standpoint of cleanliness on the top, and what about hurricane situation? That's number one. Number two, what bothers me with the combination of City Hall and the library. It seems to me that the library is getting squeezed out on size. So I would like to know, and you have those meeting rooms that'll be adjacent for the City Hall use, as well as probably to the library. I hate to see the library get shortchanged on space from a beautiful building that we have now. So can anything be done to keep, increase the space there, or I would appreciate that. Having been on the building with the other library, I would hate to see the library lose. It's an important fact with a growing city, that we need the space. I don't want, it looks like we're going to get squeezed and lose space.
Some of the benefits is that it'll be open on Friday.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
The benefits will be open on Friday. We are planning on having a maker's space, and so we are planning to use, not only having the reference library, which would be on the second floor, but also having the first floor of the library for the children and youth, and the space is available. So yes, we are making sure that we are programming the library for the 21st century, not the 20th century.
The other question is that, Commissioner Katz, I'm glad you said to get the arts department, commissioner, the arts people involved with the trellis, or, you know, whatever. The other thing that bothers me with hurricanes with the trellis, and the cleanliness, in other words, people throwing things up there, that's what happens, that's human nature. So, well, you know, it's, I'd like to know what the situation's with hurricanes with that trellis, is it going to be extremely secure, or what?
Whatever eventually gets built would be built to, you know, all the codes and standards necessary.
Right. But the library, you got to give it the space. And thanks, Mr. Commissioner Katz, with the art...
Seeing no more. I think we're ready to move on. Jim, you know, regarding the language, I'd like to not include, I'd like to include the PND's new recommendations with the subject of the design appeal along Seacrest to be reviewed by the Arts Commission. I believe that's the will of the Board.
Are you, are you saying you want the PND or the staff recommendations?
The staff recommendations from PND.
Well...
The revisions to the PND.
The revised staff recommendations.
Just making sure.
Thank you. And is everyone okay with the Arts Commission from the landscape architect? Okay. May I have a motion to approve?
Owe.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
I think those are two separate items.
So that was for the major site plan modification, and I guess that was for the community design plan appeals. We'll now approve the major site plan modification.
A move.
Right, thank you. Any discussion from the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to ordinance number 18 dash, nope, that's tabled. And I guess we're on to 12A, is that correct, Jim?
We are on to ordinance 18...
You missed one.
That was table 18023.
023, I heard was tabled for lack of notification.
I'm sorry, yeah, 022.
022 is the C.
Second.
All right.
It's table, right? Oh, I'm sorry, A. We need A.
Okay.
We have two related to telecommunications. A is going forward, B is being tabled. So A is 18016.
May I have it removed from the table?
A move.
Is it, yes.
According to Robert's rules, we have a motion and a second on table here. Can we finish with that at least, and then we can go back?
One.
Twenty-two, 022. You called that, and we motioned second it.
Yeah, it hasn't been read into the record that Jim has to do.
Okay.
So we're going to go with the order of 12A, and we have a second?
Second term.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor of removing it from the table?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, seeing none. Item ordinance number 18-016 is removed from the table.
An ordinance to the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Part III Land Development Regulations, Chapter III Zoning, Article V Supplemental Regulations, Section 12, Satellite Earth Station and Antennas of the City of Boynton Beach Code of Ordinance is to provide for the renaming of the section to be amateur radio and television antennas, to provide for revisions relating to the regulations related to the placement of amateur radio and television antennas, providing for city commission authority codification, severability codification, and an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
Owe.
Is there a second? I'm waiting.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you.
Session.
Yes.
So, can you please clarify? I sent you an email this morning. I've got some last-minute emails about this ordinance. What have we done to amend those?
I think those related to the issue of the ability to reduce or lower the antennas...
For hurricanes.
For hurricanes.
Right.
And the comment that was made by somebody from the industry was that that was not a reasonable regulation, but our interpretation is that it's up to the city commission to make that determination by adopting the ordinance, that that seems like a reasonable regulation from a staff point of view, because the antennas are now designed to accommodate that type of movement, up and down when storms approach. So we think it is consistent with the broader language of the regulation.
Do we require building permits for those towers to go up?
I believe we do, yeah.
No...
Jim, with the ones already up, would those be grandfathered?
The ones that are up would be grandfathered.
So this only applies to new towers going up?
Anything new coming up would have to comply with that regulation.
Okay. Yeah, I've heard, also received emails regarding that, and that what is our definition of storm that requires that, where we're going to send them letters or notification that they have to take that down? And do we have, I guess, any sort of code compliance with that ordinance in case they don't? I mean, do we have the ability to go on their property and take it down for them?
We would not have that ability.
So is, do we have a...
We would count on their cooperation with complying with the regulations to the same as extent as any other building code regulation in the city. That failure to comply could result in a citation.
And what is that enforcement, is that in the ordinance? And what is that enforcement, is that in the ordinance?
We do have enforcement provisions, but whether or not it could be accomplished within the time period of approaching storm is probably not possible to enforce it. It would end up being a fine.
Do you know how much that fine would be?
I don't recall, I'd have to check the ordinance on that.
Because, you know, is it, you know, a storm only lasts a day and so, we normally charge, you know, I think it's a thousand dollars a day is the max fine that we can do. So, you're saying that would be the max fine?
That's the way it's drafted.
Jim, who would go and inspect these properties with these antennas so those fines could be levied?
Code enforcement.
But do they have...
Community standards.
Yeah. Community standards are going to go around checking for the antennas?
Yes, sir.
For the hurricane?
Before the hurricane?
That's my understanding, that's a staff obligation to...
All right. You know, I'd like to say we suggest the new towers be, you know, taken down, however, I'm not, I'm sure there's a lot of other things that we're dealing with when there's a hurricane coming up and that we have the building permit information for each antenna and that property owner is liable for that antenna in that hurricane. So, it's that builder, you know, that operator is at their own risk if they want to keep it up during a hurricane.
And you're better with language that says they could keep it up as opposed to that the recommendation is that they take it down because recommendations are not a bright line.
Okay.
Means of enforcement.
Okay.
So, you would accept the suggestion that was made through the email exchange with all of you from the industry representative?
That is the will of the board?
Long as they're liable for their own damage then, sure.
Yeah. So, if they feel it can survive the hurricane, then they'll be at risk.
Liable, would these antennas, are they in proximity to other facilities or locations or homes?
Yes.
They're everywhere. I mean, it can be anywhere.
So, then would they then responsible, be responsible for any damage that may occur to surrounding properties?
I would think if an antenna fell on an adjacent property, they would be liable for any damage associated with that. That would not be a city responsibility.
I think the other concerns too is if they become detached, they become missiles and that's where, you know, it could end up and that's the danger, I think that's the reason we request that requirement is to bring that down, just like we do go around to all of our construction sites.
Yep.
And make sure they are secured, you know, you don't have loose equipment and so forth, that could be dangerous.
Trying to know that with the...
We may be able to, because I don't know that we have hundreds of ham radio antennas in the city, that we may be able to add that to, you know, a pre-inspection list.
Especially this is only for new antennas and so, I don't think it's worth, you know, community standards time when they have to worry about the construction equipment. So, I'd like to approve with the amended language not requiring the taking of the radio towers down before storm or hurricane.
Okay.
Do I have a...
Another second.
All right. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please? I'm sorry, is there any discussion from the public? Seeing none, may I have a roll call now, please? Thank you.
Katz?
Yep.
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Yes.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
And Mayor Grant?
Yes.
The vote is five to zero.
Now, we're on to...
Item C, 18022, an ordinance of the city...
I want to thank your staff. We've been working very hard with Mike Grumpf and all of those guys and we've educated them and they've educated us on a lot of things and I wanted to say thank you very much. We've been working on this for over a year.
I need you to stick your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Barry Porter, I'm the Assistant Section Manager for 14 counties in the Southern Florida section of the American Radio Relay League.
And your address?
And I live in West Delray Beach.
And your address is West Delray Beach?
It's 13908 VIA, VIA, Nidia, N-I-D-I-A, in West Delray Beach.
All right, thank you so much, Barry.
Thank you guys so much, it's really appreciated to show the support we have.
All right, Jim, may you begin?
Ordinance 18022, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida amending Part II Code of Ordinance is Chapter 16 Parks and Recreation, amending Section 16-22 Enforcement of Regulation so that park rangers have the same authority as the director to initiate the removal from the park or beach, any person acting in violation of this article providing for conflict severability and an effective date, codification and an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. I know this will, program begins October 1st. Lori? All right. Looking forward to, you know, seeing this implemented and the further safety of Boynton Beach.
I comment, Jim, you read attended to remove, I might be got an old copy, but it says eject, but as long as we got put removed in there, that's fine with me.
Yes, sir, there was an amendment on first reading to remove any reference to eject and to insert, initiate the removal from and that's changed in both the title because you did that on first reading and in the body of the ordinance.
Thank you, sir.
To the city mayor, have we hired those two individuals already?
No, we can't bring them on until October 1st, but we've begun the process of recruiting.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, any discussion?
I have one.
Okay.
Sorry. Will they be carrying guns?
No, sir.
Oh, I cannot apply then, thank you.
All right. Is there any discussion from the public? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ramos?
Yes.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
And Commissioner Katz?
Yep.
Vote is five to zero.
Item E is on the table, may I have a motion to remove from the table?
A move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none. Ordinance number 18-020 is removed from the table, Jim?
I've got to find it here. An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida amending City of Boynton Beach Code of Ordinance is Chapter 26 Water Sewers and City Utilities by amending the regulations governing the methodology used for approving the utility rates governing Chapter 26-9 Water, wastewater, Chapter 26-508 Reuse Water and Chapter 26-403 The Stormwater Assessment Fee, allowing rates to be set annually by resolution of the commission, providing for city commission authority, codification, severability, conflict and an effective date. The reference to annual there means annually in conjunction with your review and approval of the annual budget.
May I have a motion to approve?
A move.
Thank you. Is there a discussion from the board? Seeing none, is there a discussion from the audience? Seeing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Ramos?
Yes.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
And Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
The vote is five to zero.
Opposed Resolution Number R18-138, approve the utility rate for waste, wastewater, storm water, reused water and chilled water for the fiscal year 2018-19.
Motion to approve.
Is there a discussion from the board? Seeing none. Is there a discussion from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, a report by city attorney on filing city commission, I'm sorry, filling city commission vacancies.
Thank you, Mayor, we did some research and found previous notifications that the city had published when vacancies did occur on the city commission. In those circumstances, the vacancies were not known well in advance as is the current situation with Commissioner Casello's move to the state house. So, I've given you some language that needs to be tweaked a little bit, but that was the general outline of what the previous notifications look like. So, with respect to the filling of a vacancy, the commission has the authority to appoint a duly qualified citizen. There is no definition of that in that section of the code and charter, but there is a provision of the qualification of city commissioners that talks about individuals having to be qualified electors who reside in the city of Boynton Beach for one year prior to the election. Now, that's talking in terms of election, so just delete that part of it. They have to be aged 21 on or before the date the candidate files or qualifies to be a candidate, so that would mean the date of appointment. And they have to be elected from the election district in which he or she resides, so there would be a requirement that the individual that's appointed would be a resident of that district. So, if commission's approval, we would prepare a notice like that, but touching upon all those qualifications to be published now and it would run, I've put in there just for the purposes of discussion, that you would close the receipt, if you look at the last paragraph, it says, "Letters of Interest and Qualifications," we'd be submitted to the clerk prior to noon on November the 15th, 2018. I picked that date because that is the week of the election and it precedes the next commission meeting, which is the following Tuesday. And since this is well in advance, there'd be plenty of time for people who are interested to submit their qualifications rather than wait to November 14th, which is the day following the election and then announce that you're doing it.
I think that'd be, oh, Vice Mayor, would you like to begin?
The election is November 6th.
No.
On second Tuesday in November.
This is our election. Correct?
This is, this would be, well, it's...
It's not an election, it's an appointee.
It's the appointment, it's the date of the commissioners' move to the house, so...
What's his letter dated for?
November 8th, or November 7th, I believe.
Electione.
The day after.
So, the day after election, that's his...
That's, that's when there's a vacancy.
Okay.
Yeah, midnight of that day.
Yep. So, is it November 8th or November 14th do we make that announcement?
The date of the election, I thought, was the second Tuesday, isn't that the first Tuesday?
First Tuesday.
First Tuesday, oh, so that's the 7th, we adjust those dates.
Okay, so, we'll adjust that. The other thing is, is that I know that we have the advisory board form, if we can make that for the city commission, just so that they have, we have that blanket information that they all fill out besides just the resume and letter?
Okay, they have that and they also have the declaration of qualification indicating that they're a resident in the district, that the clerk has. So, the appropriate forms will be made available by the clerk's office, we could clarify what needs to be submitted in a little bit more detail and then published now.
Where are we going to advertise this?
We've, in the past, the notice has been just in a newspaper of general circulation in the legal notice section.
We put it on our website also?
Sure.
Mr. Katz?
Yes, so, just to be clear, my understanding of someone who is qualified to seek the appointment is that they have to live in the city and the district in question, District 4, for no less than one year and be 21. There's no other specific qualification?
Elector, live in the city for a year and live in the district, that's a...
By an elector.
Registered to vote.
That's it, not...
In the city.
In the city of Boynton Beach.
Okay. My other question is, is that reside, is that contiguous in that they may have had to serve overseas and gone elsewhere, but they would always reside, you know? What is our definition of reside?
We don't have a definition that's established by state case law, it's the declaration of the individual, that is their primary place of residence.
So, if...
So, they can't have two of those, they can only have one of those.
So, normally on the driver's license, whatever's on the driver's license for a year?
Not necessarily driver's license, that could be inconsistent and a driver's license could lag behind, it's the declaration that the person makes when they indicate...
How do we research a declaration?
If you want to do that, you would look at things like driver's license, voter registration card, electric bills, things of that, declaration of homestead, there's any number of things you could look at to make that decision.
So, we can put that also in the request that they provide that declaration or evidence of that declaration of one year or...
Something that, something generic in the nature of, and provide proof of residency?
Yep.
And that'd be sufficient without listing a long list of items?
Yep. All right, is, do you need a motion or just consensus?
Motion, please.
Second.
All right, so, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to lien reduction. Jim or Mark?
Is that this item?
Hi, my name is Daniel Dennehy and I'm an entrepreneur, a little nervous speaking for the first time in front of a city commission and then I hear from this gentleman, it's the greatest of all time. But I'll do my best, I really don't know how we, how I got here, but in a nutshell, I'll try and give you a brief history. I have a case number with the city of Boynton, 15-1055. I own a property in 3164 Ocean Parkway, Boynton Beach. Put the house up for sale a couple of months back, I had a family who were approved for a mortgage, had it appraised, ready to buy the house and move in before school was to open. And then, we ran a title search and a lien popped up with the city that I was unaware of. So, I called into code enforcement at the city hall, I spoke to Norma, Norma Lot, who, by the way, caduce her, she was extremely professional and helpful. And I, she helped me get a lien reduction case heard, which we did. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend the hearing because I had to go to New York and help my wife with a medical matter. But the lien was reduced, but in my, in my feeling, it shouldn't, it should have just been dismissed because I was never served. And I went and did a bit of research and asked for an appeal and during my research, I came across Section 2.81 in the service of notices that basically states that certified receipt has to be sent to the owner of the property in question at the address listed in the tax collector's office for tax notices. I never received any notice. I brought the information from the tax appraiser's site and the address that Norma showed me that the notice was sent to was actually an address in Delray Beach in what was a shared work office, like a WeWork situation. And when I researched that, it turns out it was the address of the realtor who sold me the property four years ago. Funnily enough, she then showed me in her file a signed returned receipt from the same address, but it was basically just a line through it. So, what I did was just if anybody needs to see my actual signature, I brought it with me notarized, which was something that we needed to show the city of Boynton Beach to get the original lien reduction case held and now, of course, this appeal. So, the bottom line is I never received any notice, I was not served properly. And I do want to let you know that this is one of many properties that I own and that's why I mentioned I'm an entrepreneur and I'm glad you're encouraging entrepreneurship. But in the history of what I've done in business, I like to take care of things immediately and I can tell you that if I had been served on time, it would have been taken care of. I also want to show you this letter from Palm Beach County, which is the tax assessment office and I have receipts showing that the real estate taxes on my property since I own it are paid in full, not only paid in full, but I take full advantage of the 4% pay early scheme. So, I pay, you know, by December, you know, the previous year. So, I don't know why I had a lien. By the way, the lien on the house was up to $107,000 because four years ago, the magistrate added $100 a day, feeling that I didn't show up. The house went on the market for $210,000, you can sort of see why I would be upset with a lien that big. And if you do get a chance to speak to Norma, who deserves every credit in the world for her professionalism, she will, I'm sure, let you know about how shocked I was. And in the past, I can show you that I've had dealings with city of Delray Beach.
Thank you. I have a question for Mark in the sense is that what is the city's costs?
Our administrative cost in this case was, excuse me, $730.15.
And there's no other costs, you know, I know sometimes we have to mow a lawn or demolish a building.
No, those are our only costs.
And so, the city's only out the $735?
Seven thirty, yes, and fifteen cents.
And the reason why is he did not obtain a BTR for the rental property?
That was part of it, yes.
Has he obtained a BTR?
Everything that's in compliance, yes.
Yeah, so, board, do you have a...
First of all, I'd like to probably ask Mark, sir, or either you, how many other properties you own here in Boynton?
That's the only property I have in Boynton.
I thought you said you had many properties.
I have many properties.
But this is the only one in Boynton?
Yeah.
So, you don't have many properties in Boynton?
No.
I want to state it for the record, you don't have many in Boynton, because that's the way I was looking at it, you don't have many in...
I'd like to.
Well, sir, you have the opportunity, you know, but, you know, let me go ahead and say something to staff, you know, I don't know what the problem was before, but in the previous years when we had lien reductions that came before us, you know, we was leaning and we said, you know, as long as we recoup the, recoup the costs for this city and everything is fine, then we just make sure that we get that from the individual and then, you know, we just said, you know, wish them the best of luck, that's the way I want to go tonight with this, this is the way I am leaning. I'm only one vote.
Yes, Commissioner Casello.
And I would agree with Commissioner McCray, our job is not to make money off violations and liens, it's to get in compliance. And my question is, why was this notice sent to the... And my question is, why was this note sent to the wrong address? Don't you follow up on that?
It wasn't sent to the wrong address. It's sent to the address that the property appraiser's office gives us as a legal mailing address. Both the property appraisers and the tax assessor's office gave the address that it went to.
So, that was the address on the deed?
The deed, the tax assessor's document, as well as the property appraisers, all three had the same address.
Yeah. And, you know, I'm looking at it, I believe now, and that it has changed to your Brooklyn address.
It was always the Brooklyn address on the property appraiser's side, I believe.
No. In April of 2015, the property appraiser had the mailing address listed as 55 Southeast Second Avenue, Delray Beach, Florida. That was on April the 20th, 2015.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I understand that that was not your address, and I'm sure you changed it after that. And we sent it certified mail and got that answer back. However, we never looked whether the Green Mount management was, that was our resident agent. Do we, you know, for certain LLCs, do we look to send the certified?
We do. We checked the SunBiz for this corporation, but it was not listed. The corporation was not listed in the Florida SunBiz.
It is not listed.
No. And we have documentation to that effect as well.
Okay.
I'll support Commissioner McCray and Casello.
I'd like to make the motion that we recoup our administrative cost and reduce everything else.
All right. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I would suggest register with SunBiz.
I'll do it, Jim.
Wait, 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 no. Future agenda items. Okay. Since we already approved Town Square, the G, for Vice Mayor Romulus, you know, the local artists, I think this would be a nice time, you know, kind of like to bring this up for discussion since we have given things to the art department to look in. We kind of like need to start, you know, kind of like looking at this before it gets too far down, before we start doing something.
I'd recommend F and G because they both pertain to the Arts Commission to bring F and G.
Bring F and G up so we can discuss.
Are we talking about that now or next meeting?
Next meeting. I'm ready to go home.
Yeah, we'll bring a report to you, Mayor, on G because we are just beginning the art local, the art public places process for Town Square, so we haven't progressed all the way through, but we could provide an update to you on what we've gotten so far. That's why I had TBD because it's a little, we're a little early.
Okay. The other thing is that, can we remove item C as it's been on the future agenda item more than, I think, the 90 days that we stated? And then also, I believe that we had a discussion regarding that Jim was going to speak to the commission on ethics. Is that going to be brought back?
That'll be at the next meeting. I've been there already, and I'm working on some revisions to the proposed ordinance that reflects some comments that I received.
Is it referring to the prohibition of board member?
Board members, yes.
It'll be on the next meetings?
Very next meeting.
New business?
Yes.
Is there any further comments from the board?
Do it, Jim.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll use the jerk.